Okay, here we go. Sorry, we're a little late. Welcome to the Murray City Municipal Council City Council meeting of July 15th, 2025. All council members are here. Jennifer's here, the mayor, Brooke, G L. Thank you, our city attorney. Thank you for attending. The first thing we are going to be doing is having our pledge of allegiance by our very own Chief Burnett. Thank you, Chief.
Hey, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is approval of minutes. Were there any corrections to the minutes of June 3rd and June 17th? Did the council see anything? Kate, if there are no corrections or anything, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 3rd and June 17th, 2025.
I will take a second.
I'll second.
I have a first by council member Paul Pickett and a second by Diane Turner, councilwoman.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Cotter.
Aye, thank you. Kate, our next one is citizens' comments. You may come to the podium. Make sure the little light is on. It should be on like a green light. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city of residence. And then where's Patty? There's Patty in the purple shirt way in the back. She has a clipboard and you will be asked to fill one of those out. So anyone that would like to come forward, please come forward now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colby Oliverson, resident of Murray and District 4. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a public servant myself, I want to begin by sincerely thanking each of you for your service to Murray City. I know it's often a thankless job with long hours and limited compensation, but the impact you have on the quality of life for residents like my family and me is deeply significant and appreciated. My connection to Murray runs deep. My grandfather Ray Oliverson was principal of Murray High School from 1973 to 1988, and his love for this community inspired my wife and me to buy our first home on Kenwood Drive in historic Murray six years ago. We love our charming street, our neighborhood, and this city. Unfortunately, since moving in, we faced ongoing and serious issues with our next store neighbor at 5470 Kenwood Drive. While we're sincerely grateful that many of our concerns have been addressed through the city code enforcement's help, one major issue remains unresolved, and I'm here tonight as a last resort because it is my understanding that code enforcement can't take any further action. I'm hoping to bring this to your attention as a potential gap in city code that threatens public health, safety, and property values. Recently, our neighbor dug an unpermitted large pond approximately five feet deep, 15 feet wide, and 10 feet long, easily the size of a small swimming pool. He has stated plans to stock it with ducks, fish, and crawfish. This raises several serious concerns. One, drainage and erosion. A large pile of displaced soil remains in the backyard, raising questions about runoff and potential erosion. Second, and more concerning to me, mosquitoes and water quality. Without proper filtration or mosquito control, the pond could quickly become a health hazard and source of foul odor. I have no idea how he plans to filter the water and ensure it does not become stagnant. Third, structural safety. The pond is just a few feet from our property line and from my detached garage in my backyard. Without proper lining or stabilization, this could easily undermine nearby structures. I have no idea if he plans to line it with what. What makes this especially concerning is that unlike residential pools, which are regulated extensively, there appears to be no city code addressing ponds of this or any size. Yet this pond is roughly the size of a small pool and poses similar, if not greater, risks than a swimming pool. When I tried to speak with my neighbor directly, he was unreceptive, and this pond is only part of the larger problem. On his small lot, approximately .3 acres, he currently has multiple dogs, multiple cats, multiple chickens, guinea pigs at one time, multiple beehives, and even bat houses. Adding a large pond with aquatic animals only worsens an already overburdened property. So tonight, I'm asking two things. One, if anything can be done under current city code, I ask for your help in mitigating this specific situation. Am I or code enforcement missing something under current code? Second, if nothing can be done under current code, I strongly urge you to consider adopting ordinances that address large, unregulated backyard ponds and create a definition of pond or pool because they can cause harm to this or other neighborhoods. I've emailed each of you photos of the property to give you a clearer picture of what we're dealing with, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Sincerely thank you for all your time and all that you do to protect the residents and neighborhoods of Murray City.
Thank you.
Well, this is a first. My name is Bob Van Bever, District 4, Murray resident for 49 years. Usually get Ms. Sherry here, but she's homesick. So I'm here to speak in behalf of Mr. Oliverson. His property is behind mine. The property he's talking about on Kenwood is directly behind my house, and there have been a lot of issues. We've had a fire there, July 5th last year, started in a woodpile. He's had free-ranging chickens in that property, and since then, I have had to buy a rat prevention program that cost me $800 a year to put bait traps out so we can mitigate the problem with rats and mice. We've had chickens that fly over our yard. I have a couple of golden retrievers. They're very good at retrieving dogs or cat ducks and chickens. Not a mark on it, but my neighbor has a couple of 57 dogs that shred those chickens all over the backyard. There needs to be some kind of regulation on how many chickens you can have, how many beehives you can have, how many ponds you can have. I worry about the mosquitoes, the smell, Mr. Oliverson's proximity with his detached garage, with that water seeping in and ruining the foundation to his garage. I think there needs to be somebody else that can go in there and do something proactively to take care of this. I've talked to Mark Borum several times, great guy, has done as much as he can. My wife and I have talked to Elvonne, and they've been very supportive and concerned with what we're doing, but there's also their hands are tied. I think we need to look at some of the issues that are there, come up with some kind of a solution so this doesn't go forward. You know, stagnant water can be really a great place for mosquitoes. The smell, I've worried about that. I worry about kids getting into the water. Had a friend whose two-year-old daughter died in her bathtub in four inches of water, and this is going to be five feet deep. I worry about kids getting in there, and I think that something could be done, something more could be looked at to see what could be prevented from this going forward. We're not a farming community like we used to be. We're residential, we're high residential. If you saw Mr. Oliverson's yard, you would want him to be your neighbor. I don't want to chase him away. He's got the most beautiful landscaped yard. His place is immaculate, and for a young man to come in and do that, I'm very, very appreciative of what he does because it helps our property values to come up. It's a great source for Murray City to be proud of, somebody like that. He only mentioned his grandfather, but his grandfather was a wonderful man and a teacher and educator at Murray High School. This young man is the same way. He's the same kind of guy. I thank you for your time. I appreciate you. I know each and every one of you individually, and my wife and I think the world of each and every one of you, but thank you for your help, and hopefully you'll have your consideration to look into this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, can I address this real quick?
Sure, go right ahead.
Bob, is it Kobe? I'll have Doug set up an appointment, and we'll meet with you, and we'll go over this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Come ahead.
Hello, my name is Lena Ayot. I live at 5454 South 555 West. That makes me the gray house, two-car garage with attached to Hidden Village Park. Today, the problem is that there is a sober living facility directly across the street from me that addresses 5449 South 555 West. So they are smacked right up against the park. It's not so much a sober living facility as it is a drug den. I could name all of the issues. There are just too many to take care of in three minutes. I did it earlier today. I couldn't spit it all out in less than 18. So what I want to address today is how did a sober living facility get started, A, that close to the park, B, without the neighbors knowing it, and C, this isn't sober facility. This is an in-and-out all day, every day, people doing drugs, coming to get drugs, taking drugs. It's just crazy. So I understand that they have a business license. That's great, but the facility is not run that way. And I think as a concerned member of the Auburn Gardens subdivision, this raises a lot of problems for everybody else here. And I know exactly how it happened, and I know exactly how they're doing this, and I know that federally they are funded. I know that insurance pays into this facility, and I know that the people that run it are also taking donations. So instead of selling the house, they turned it into a sober living facility, making approximately $32,000 a month, and they're not living soberly. I have seen... We have smelled weed, which yes, it is legal in this state, but you have to vape it. There's no way you can put flame to the flower. It has to be vaporized, and once it's vaporized, the smell only goes about six, eight feet. So since I live across the street, it's too much. And I've seen cases of beer getting in there, too. Did I go over my timer? I meant to set the timer and then totally forgot. So we know that they're smoking. We know that they're drinking and illicit drug use. They're making it very clear because they are leaving little breadcrumbs all the way back to this house. Is that it?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Trish Seiverson, and I live at 5459 South 555 West in Murray, which makes me the neighbor directly to the south of the home that Lena was just speaking about. I am here tonight to plead for your assistance in reclaiming the safety for the children of our neighborhood. I appreciate the need for a sober living residence in a space for folks to get their life on track directly across the park and across from the only entrance point to the park for these young children and teenagers that walk over there is not the space for that. What we know is that while folks are in recovery, there is often a 40% to 60% chance that they'll have some sort of relapse. During that relapse, a perfectly wonderful human on drugs has the potential to be violent and to engage in criminal activity. I don't want my 15-year-old over at the park with the potential of someone soliciting drugs to him, him witnessing inappropriate behavior like I witnessed today in my front yard, or potentially being the victim of a violent crime. The children in our neighborhood have already been placed in severe danger. William Shepherd, a convicted kidnapper and sex offender that is on the sex offense list, was living in that home. While living in that home, he frequented the park alone. He spent time on the cement steps right next to the playground where kids that are too young to defend themselves were playing. As parents, we have a right to feel like our kids are safe to play in the park that attracted us to the neighborhood in the first place. The fact that Mr. Shepherd was allowed to move into that home, which is less than 1,000 feet from a park and therefore unlawful for him to be at, and was allowed access into that park unsupervised, is evidence that there is not adequate supervision or oversight to ensure the safety of our children. An oops, and I'm sorry, or a will do better would never fix the type of damage that could have been done from that. He's currently at the state penitentiary. He's violated his parole. We don't know if it was with someone in our neighborhood or not. I'm begging for your help. We need to reclaim this. The fact that we were not notified at all when these people moved in left us with nowhere to report the suspicious and concerning behavior that first alerted us to this home and that continues to make the surrounding neighbors feel very unsafe. We really need some help here.
Thank you.
I live at 5490 555 West. My name is Cory Peterson, and I'm not going to rehash everything that's been said because they did a very good job, but I just, I'm gobsmacked also that Murray didn't have any kind of warning system that this is going in your neighborhood, this is happening, this is going to be licensed, and this will be on your street. I can't believe that there wasn't notification to a neighborhood over something like this. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Bressford. I live in Murray, down the street from the aforementioned house that we're speaking about. And interestingly enough, when the house first became occupied, my wife and I frequent this park several times a day, and we noticed a lot of illicit activity happening at the house, and we were recording this and working up a report to send to the police department for drug activity, drug dealing, just illicit activity. And it was only several months ago when one of our neighbors stopped by and said, oh, it's a quote-unquote halfway house. I'm not sure what it's titled, but we're like, oh, okay, that makes a lot more sense for such activity to be happening there. And then also top of that, registered sex offender that was living there at the time, I would also like to reiterate how uncomfortable and dangerous that places every child who lives in the neighborhood, and there are a significant amount of children in the neighborhood riding their bikes around, being children. And yeah, we need help with this situation for any of us to feel safe or have our children feel safe and welcome in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marlene Mog, and I live at 5631 South Stanford, so not right directly by the park, south a little bit, and I am very concerned about my children's safety. As soon as that house sold, I noticed there were a lot of men coming in and out. And having grown up in a neighborhood where there was a lot of drug use and abuse, I knew right away that this is not normal behavior. And when I was alerted that there was a sex offender there, I am terrified. My kids have spent the whole summer not going to the park, which they love to do. Sorry. As somebody who was abused as a child, this is terrifying to watch all the kids that my children go to school with come and play there. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Take your time.
Having them come there the day after school gets out to plan a party, six grade-year-old girls planning their own fun party at the park, and we were not aware, out there having fun, making water balloons, bringing cupcakes, no idea that diagonal from where they're sitting at the picnic table is somebody who attempted to kidnap a child and did lewd things to them is absolutely terrifying. I don't walk my dog over there anymore. I did try to the other night, and with all of the traffic and individuals coming and going and the different cars, it is not safe, and my heart breaks for all of the kids in my neighborhood and all of my neighbors that can no longer utilize that area. There are men that come to the park at 5:00 in the morning. I don't know where they're coming from, but they do go into the bathroom for an hour, and then another man comes 20 minutes later, and then they don't leave. That is not okay. It is not safe, and it is not fair for any of us that utilize that area to be that terrified to go to the park. And it is right next to a church. It is next to a dental office. It's next to Select Health, and they use the park regularly for parties. They have families come and do fun runs, and we're running past a sex offender that nobody let us know in a business that we were not notified that was granted a license where in Holiday you have to notify everybody within 500 yards of said business to let them have a say before you approve it. There was no kind of notification that I am aware of or that any of my neighbors were made aware of that that was going to happen, and it is an absolute tragedy that nothing has been done. And moving forward, if nothing happens, that's on all of us, on everyone here that just let it go. So thank you.
Would you like a Kleenex? Come grab one.
I just want to go home.
Come grab one. Come grab one. You're welcome. Thank you.
I sympathize with those people, but mine's a whole different subject. Becky Hanson, I live at 5676 South Magic Drive. I've lived in Murray my entire married life of 53 years. I love the park system and walk the Jordan River Parkway Trail several times a week all year round. I'm a birder and enjoy the seasonal migration of the birds as the Jordan River is part of the migratory bird flyway. Most birds migrate at night along the river. The birds are disoriented by light, and that is why we need to protect the precious dark sky corridor. On the webpage of the Jordan River Commission, of which Murray is a member, it states that natural areas should not be artificially lit. I am very concerned that the city is planning solar lighting on the parkway. The blueprint Jordan River guiding principles are to preserve open space by implementing buffers between the river and the built environment. Lighting belongs in built environments, not the natural open space of the parkway. Solar lights will be on all night. I thought the park closes at 11:00 P.M. Lighting the parkway will be an invitation for beer parties, vandals, teenagers, and the homeless to roam all night. Solar lights sound like a recipe for trouble, perhaps disaster. I've personally spoken to people whose backyard's back up to the parkway. They do not want solar lights on at night. Willow Pond Park and Murray Park all have lights. The walkers wishing to walk in the dark can go there. Those of us that walk the parkway in the early morning and late evening either carry a flashlight or use a headlamp. $3.4 million has been set aside for road repairs, and in that is money for the solar lights on the parkway. I wonder how many people will that benefit? Perhaps there is another safety project somewhere in the city that would benefit more people for the money. I would like to suggest repairing the Equestrian Trail under 5400 South. It's a tripping hazard. Or if people are your concern, how about replacing the small wooden bridge that crossed the rivet from Hunter's Woods? The bridge has been there forever and was a safe way to cross the water. Now it's a hazard with it gone. These are just two projects that would benefit all the day users of the parkway. Just saying, the day users respect and protect the opportunity to enjoy nature in the very heart of the Salt Lake Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, I'm back. I just, I love how all the neighbors have gotten together and have started really bringing attention to this over by Hidden Village Park. I just want to reiterate, like, we're not over-exaggerating. Like, this has really turned into something that's like, I don't care how stoic you are, it's something that needs to be addressed. They didn't even handle the obvious prostitution, the needles, like the constant drug exchanges, my wife being stalked, my babysitter who looks like my wife being borderline sexually assaulted. I talked to one of the people at the gas station, and she just conversates with these guys that come in. They obviously have a different look, and they look very sketchy a lot of the times. It's often unfortunately stereotypical, but those stereotypes exist for a reason. And she's talked to at least three other felons. So we're not just talking about one sexual predator. Like, there could be any type of a felon for any type of violent or sexual offense. They're being placed in the same place. So it's not like that guy's gone and issue's gone. And the bottom line is, is it gets me pretty heated because now I have a son, and what's been said here really hits home for me. And if it doesn't get resolved, we're going to move. Like, this is not in any way or shape or form acceptable, and the neighborhood went from a gem of a place that I was so stoked to live by to something that my babysitter can't even leave, she's not comfortable leaving the house anymore. And this is a major issue, and I would really hope that you guys would put whatever forces you can at play, because there's a lot of angles this is breaking the law. There's different regulating agencies. You'd imagine that coding violations, et cetera, like, you can't maintain a license if you're housing a drug den that has, that's shooting up heroin or meth literally through all hours of the night, every day, and taking in beer publicly and terrorizing the neighborhood. Oh, sweet. There are advertisements online of like, come save your children. It's like, I've lost two friends to this. You know, like, they were like my best friends, and I lost them to addiction, and these types of corruption hit home for me, and it's ruining the neighborhood. So I just wanted to come up and make sure I kind of just tied the dots together here. It's the same place I was talking about last week, and we're getting the community together for this because this can't continue. We want to keep the place amazing. The housing market doesn't allow for a lot of relocation for most, and I think that's all incredibly relevant to this overall circumstance that we need to address. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Oh, yeah.
Will you state your name, Mike? Thank you.
Yeah, no, Mike Laverty.
Laverty.
I'm in Murray on Allen Dale Drive, just the same neighborhood as all these folks over here, so.
Thank you, Mike. All right, seeing that there's no other citizen comment, we as the council really appreciate every single one of you coming now and speaking to us and letting us know things. We hear you. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Kate, our next agenda item is our Murray City Employee of the Month, Christopher Kestrel, Park Cemetery Supervisor. Myself, the mayor, and Bruce Holyoke will be meeting. Chris, up at the podium. Thank you.
How are you, my friend? Good. We're excited to have Chris here. Kind of a compliment for you, Chris, and I've known Chris for a while and had the opportunity to go to lunch with him, and he's a great young man. Got a great supervisor, Bruce. We appreciate all you've done. And Chris, I'm going to let Pam read most of this, but you've been with us 20 years, and this is well-deserved to be our employee of the month. So just from the administration, we want to thank you for all you've done, for the city. You're a hard worker, you're well-respected, and we appreciate all that you do for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for everything that you have done for our cemetery. There was one thing that I happened to notice when I was doing my reading, that you take special...
special interest on Memorial Day. And you make it so that the cemetery is very peaceful and beautiful and a place for people to come and spend time honoring their loved ones. I really appreciate that, and I know the council does too. I know it's a lot of hard work. I don't have family in a cemetery here in Utah. It's in Albany, New York, and I have people there that takes care of my family's graveside. And I really appreciate, and the council appreciates, all the hard work that you do. So with that, we are waiting for your gift card to come down the stairs. So I'm trying to stretch. See, I was pointing to the clip, so I'm stretching this out. But anyways, the council would like to say thank you, and the mayor's would like, oh, and here she comes. Anyways, this is yours. And the fifty-dollar gift card, and usually that goes to the wife. Oh, you're getting, no, don't go anywhere yet. And here's your gift card, and thank you, and congratulations. And please, Bruce, we'll leave it to you now. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to quickly say thank you, Chris, for your hard work. You do a wonderful job, and you make, along with other people, for the many years that the cemetery has been in business, so to say, um, so to speak, you've done a wonderful job, and you've helped keep that tradition alive of having a beautiful place to go to at any time of the year, winter, summer, fall, spring. So thank you very much for your attention to detail and for the way you treat your employees, your full-time staff and your part-time staff, and we really appreciate you have, that you're with the parks and that you do such a wonderful job. So again, from the Parks Division, thank you very much, and you can say something now.
I just want to thank you guys for the recognition, and, uh, I want to thank Bruce and everyone at the parks, because anytime we need a hand, they send people over, and they're always willing to help. And I want to thank my coworkers, Devon Kiyas, Robert Mills, and Michelle Carter, because without them, I couldn't keep the place looking great. They're amazing, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and congratulations on your wedding Thursday, right? Yeah. Thank you for everything you do. Okay, so there's no consent agenda tonight, so we are going to go right into public hearing. Um, first, we have a consideration, a resolution of the Murray City Municipal Council approving adjustment to the wastewater service boundaries it has in common with Mid Valley Improvement District. Ben Ford will be presenting. And this is a public hearing.
Good evening, council. I am just going to give a real brief recap of what these two resolutions are and why we were here, um, to discuss them tonight. So, uh, the Mid Valley Service Boundary has not been updated since nineteen forty-seven, so they've gone through the process of updating, uh, their boundary with every entity that touches them. Murray's boundary, there's really two properties that this, these two resolutions affect, and it really, um, defines that their boundary does, does not come north of I-215. So this affects the Sam's Club property and then seven fifty-six East Winchester property. As part of this, um, seventy-eight notices were mailed out to, uh, all the entities and residents, businesses close to these, and then special, um, notices sent out to the two entities that it's specifically affecting. Um, you guys approved a resolution, um, back in, in May with the notice of intent to adjust the boundary, showing that here. Um, this is just the legal description that's depicted in the plat, highlighted here, that details the Murray boundary, everything within our border and Mid Valley. Here it, here it is, that legal description highlighted, um, on the entity plat that will be signed. And highlighted again within the plat, and then you have two resolutions before you tonight that, um, will be public hearings, one approving the plat itself and one approving the boundary adjustment. So just showing both of those. So does the council have any questions regarding these resolutions that I can answer?
Okay, the council has no questions, but I will open this up to the public. Please come forward, state your name, address. Okay, seeing that there's no public hearing, I will close the public hearing. I will turn it back over to the council for any other questions for, for Ben. If there are none.
How about a motion?
I will take a motion.
All right.
Perfect.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Murray City Municipal Council approving an adjustment to the wastewater service boundaries it has in common with Mid Valley Improvement District.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have.
You ready?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Cutter.
Aye. Thank you. It has been approved. Thank you, Ben. Okay, our next, uh, public hearing is, uh, to consider a resolution of the Murray City Municipal Council accepting the plat depicting the adjustment to the wastewater service boundaries the city has in common with Mid Valley Improvement District, and Ben Ford is back.
I am back. So this resolution is just accepting that plat description, the legal description and the plat map. Any questions?
Okay, seeing there's no questions from the council, I will open this up to public hearing. Please come forward, state your name. You have three minutes. Address. Seeing that there is none, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it back over to the council.
You open for motion?
I will take a motion.
Side motion to approve a resolution of the Murray City Municipal Council accepting the plat depicting the adjustment to the wastewater service boundaries the city has in common with Mid Valley Improvement District.
I second that motion.
Thank you. I have a, a motion by council member Adam Hawk, a second by council member Paul Pickett. We will turn it over to Brooke for a roll call. Thank you.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Cutter.
Aye. Thank you so very much, council. Okay, seeing that there is no business items, we're going to jump right into the mayor's report and any questions we may have for him.
Thanks, Pam. Uh, I'm going to spend just a little time on the one thing that we're doing over the next, one of the things we're doing over the next couple of months. If, the theater just keeps getting better and better and better because it's getting closer and closer to being finished. Um, most of you know that we have, our opening will be September twenty-sixth, Friday, and we are having, uh, the, the person that will open is a young lady by the name of Lauren Allred. Lauren, um, was in The Voice and, uh, The Greatest Showman, and, uh, she's the one that's saying Never Enough, uh, wasn't the actress, but was, uh, the voice. And then since then, she's, uh, decided to, she wanted to pursue this and, um, her career in music. And so we, um, have been lucky, blessed to be able to have Lauren, uh, that will be attending, uh, will be opening our theater that day, again, on the twenty-sixth of, um, September. Um, she's been on Britain's Got Talent, America's Got Talent. What's more impressive to me than those things is she's from Murray, Utah. So we're going to have someone come back home and, and be able to perform. And I'm going to, Erica, I've asked Erica, who set most of this up for Lauren, um, if she'll, uh, play a little clip of Lauren. Yeah, there you go. It's not working? That's okay. So just move on? Okay. So we'll just move on. So anyway, uh, it was, it's kind of cute. She was, uh, really expressed how grateful she was to Murray City and for, um, all that they had done for her, and she'd been involved in the arts program here in Murray, and just, it's, it's going to be a great opportunity. We're excited. Tickets will go on sale, um, Friday, August first. Uh, I have a feeling they'll be gone that day, so you may want to call early. Uh, Lauren, uh, will also be performing for a city recognition event, so how we do our boards and commissions. So this is probably a surprise to you, that we will be doing the boards and commission. Uh, it won't be a dinner, it will be over at the theater, and it will be, Lauren will be performing the day before for all our volunteers, uh, the boards and commissions, and so they will all be invited, just like we do every year, we have them together for dinner. Um, and that will include, of course, the council, but we're excited to have her on board and, uh, be able to participate in this. It's going to be great for us to be able to, uh, have her opening our theater. We're excited. Uh, anyway, that's kind of what I have for you. The, like I said, the theater is looking great. Uh, Kim and I were over there today, and, um, if you haven't seen, there's some beautiful, I, I wanted to show you pictures, it didn't do it just, justice, so you'll just need to, if you want to come over, I'll take you over there one day. If you want to go tomorrow, I'll go over tomorrow with you. But anyway, it's, it's looking really good, so that's my report.
Does the council have anything for the mayor? Nope. Well, then I will adjourn this meeting.